All right, we're going to begin the meeting. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021 Public Board Meeting. Call the meeting to a litter. Roll call, Mrs. Burns?
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman is absent with prior notice. Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mrs. Hellenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This evening, the board met in executive session, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Mrs. Burns, any announcements this evening?
No announcements.
Thank you. Dr. McGee, Superintendent's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. This meeting Superintendent Report is a little bit different, and it focuses on things we're thankful for. When I reflect on the things I'm thankful for this time of the year, it always includes Neshamani students, Neshamani parents, the entire Neshamani community. They're among the top on the list. But more specifically, within our community, I'm thankful for the Neshamani Board of School Directors, both past and present, and our other elected officials. Over my 30-year career in Neshamani, I've had the ability to watch and, more recently, work cooperatively with a group of elected volunteers who put Neshamani students and parents and the entire community above their self-interests. The Neshamani Board of School Directors has set the standard for civility, transparency, and educational quality during our ongoing pandemic like no others. So thank you for your service, and I am truly thankful for you. But again, more specifically, I rise this evening to acknowledge and give thanks to two board members who were voluntarily choosing to step aside and make way for others to continue on their mission. First, Mr. David Marington. Mr. Marington will be stepping down after four years on the Neshamani School Board, adding another accomplishment to his long list of community service. The Marington family has been part of Neshamani since Neshamani was formed in the early 1950s, when we brought six different school districts together to form what Neshamani is today. I've had the distinct pleasure of working with three generations of David Maringtons. First, Dr. David Marington. His father was my high school assistant principal back at the Shaminie Maple Point High School. The second David Marington I met was his son, as I graduated him from the Shaminie High School and watched him being a track star. Then, more recently, I've had the opportunity to work with the guy in the middle, Mr. David Marington, School Board Director. After 35 years of teaching social studies for the wrong district, Mr. Marington returned to Neshamani. During his tenure on the board, Mr. Marington served on our Educational Development Committee, where he's helped us reconfigure staff development to be more teacher-centered and effective, and helped formulate our strategic plan that guides us into the future. And in doing so, he's set the bar of selflessness and professionalism, as he focuses on what's best for students and staff. Mr. Marington, I will keep with me your professional, solution-oriented, balanced approach to solving complex issues as I move forward with the district, as you have set the standard. On behalf of the entire board, the Neshamani staff, and the entire community, thank you for your service, and we wish you the best in your next endeavor. Mr. Parentano and Mr. Marington, join us up front here?
Coming up here.
Yeah. So we have for you?
On behalf of the board of school directors, I want to thank you for four years of service that you've been here at Neshamani. You'll be greatly missed, and I wish you much luck in your endeavors as you go forward from us, and don't be a stranger.
And then, assuming the board passes something on their action agenda today, here's a lifetime pass to all things Neshamani. Hold on, hold on. Since Irene gets flowers, so does David. Apparently, that's how it works nowadays. (APPLAUSE). Congratulations. Thank you. Got it. Next, Ms. Irene Boyle. Ms. Boyle has served our community four-by-four years as a Neshamani School District Director. Four-by-four, yes, that's 16 years. I was a math teacher at Carl Sandberg Middle School when Ms. Boyle first took her oath of office to be a School Board Member in 2005. During her tenure, she has mentored nine superintendents in those 16 years, along with an even larger number of School Board Presidents. Yeah, "God bless her" was the comment from Paul here. As only the most recent of those nine superintendents, I now yield the remaining part of the Superintendent's Report to Mr. Parentano and others who have worked with Ms. Boyle longer than I. Mr. Parentano?
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Now, it's not that we don't love David, because we do, but we're going to spend a little bit of extra time honoring Ms. Boyle for her unprecedented 16 years of service to the Neshamani School community. I'm not aware of anyone that has served that length of tenure, especially as a volunteer. First, I'm going to take some time to read some letters that we received on your behalf first, and then we're going to introduce some members of the audience that have come out specifically to honor your service. First, we have a letter from House Representative Frank Ferry, who says, "Congratulations on the celebration of your career of public service to the Neshamani School District Community. This evening, you have every right to be proud of your numerous accomplishments. Your career in public service has served as a district model of achievement for all who have had the pleasure of serving with you. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you and your 16 years of dedicated service to the students, faculty, and taxpayers of the Neshamani School District. However, your commitment to helping the lives of others does not stop there. Your tireless hours with several other community organizations, including the Apprise Program, continue to demonstrate your passion for public service. The work you have done and the sacrifices you have made throughout your career will always be remembered and will serve as a legacy for others to follow. I always enjoyed working with you, and now know you will be greatly missed. I sincerely hope you will continue to enjoy life through the blessings of your family and friends. Good luck to you in all your future endeavors. Frank Ferry." We also have a letter from House Representative Tina Davis. Dear Ms. Boyle, please accept this letter as my heartfelt appreciation for your 16 years of service as a School Board Director. The students and families and taxpayers of the Neshamani School District have all benefited greatly from your tireless advocacy and dedication to them. As you transition to this new chapter in your life, know that your leadership and enthusiasm for education will be greatly missed. I am happy to join with our entire Neshamani School community in expressing our internal gratitude for your service. Again, thank you for giving so much of yourself in service to your community. I hope the next generation of leaders will follow your wonderful example. I wish you much deserved happiness and enjoyment in the coming years. If I can be of any assistance to you in the future, please don't hesitate to contact me. Thank you, Irene. Signed, Tina M. Davis, State Representative." I'll have one other letter from former Superintendent Robert Copeland, who says, "Congratulations on your retirement for your long and exemplary service to the students and the entire Neshamani community. As you know, I've retired, and the months leading up to my last day, people would often say, 'Are you counting the days?'" To which I would say, "No, but I am counting the board meetings. I read the news, and I see the story after story about how hard it is on the school boards across the country these days. I have to say, in my 20 years of being a superintendent, I can't remember there ever being an easier time to be a board member. And I traveled, excuse me, and I certainly remember the sometimes rocky road we traveled six years ago. But no matter the issue, I always valued your institutional history and your firm moral center. I am sorry I couldn't be here tonight. I would have said more, but Steve said, 'Keep it short.'" Best wishes to you, and best wishes to Neshamani, who will definitely miss you. Love, Bob." There is also, at the end, when we present you with your plaque, both Frank Ferry and Representative Davis have given you a certificate of recognition, which we will present to you at that time. Now, many people have crossed your path over the years, and it is a testament to not only your character, but your service, that so many have joined us this evening to say a few words. So at this time, does Mr. Tosti, we still approach the podium?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Tosti, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Thank you, Dr. McGee, and the rest of the board. Ms. Boyle, I just wanted to stop and just thank you for your service to our school district. 16 years is a long time. You have put up with a lot during them 16 years, and as a School Board Member, all of you know it's not the easiest elected position here in the township or any township. You put up with stuff from parents, you put up with the students, and it's a thankless job. So I wanted to just stop and thank you for 16 years of service, and thank you for all that you did. Mr. Marington, thank you for your service, and I also can't leave without thanking the rest of the board. But good luck, and if you ever need anything, you have my number. Thanks, Irene.
Mr. Appleton's also here. Mr. Appleton, go right ahead, sir.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I just wanted to come in and thank Irene. You've taught me a lot about the school district through our times that we've sat down and talked, and, you know, I know it's not a partisan position, so, and I know it hasn't been easy sometimes, but you've done very well in that position. So I just want to thank you for your longtime service. Thank you very much.
At this time, Ms. Helene Ratner, please.
Hi, Irene. We go back a long way. I want to thank you for everything, not only for the 16 years, but for as long as I've known you. Again, I want to repeat what Tom Tosti said, as being Vice Chair of the Democratic Party here in Bucks County and Chair of Middletown Democrats, people don't realize that elected officials volunteer their time, and they do put up with a lot of stuff. And I want to commend not only Irene, David, but everyone on this board for everything that they do put up with from everyone in the community, and that you all are doing a great job. I was just saying, just a little while ago, I have my 50th reunion next year, and I'm a proud graduate of Neshamani, and I'm proud of everything that you are doing, and I want you to keep up all the good work. Irene and I have had numerous conversations over the 16 years, and I want all of you to continue doing everything that you are doing. You don't get the recognition that you are doing. And again, I'm proud of all the work that you have done, Irene. I want you to keep up all the volunteer work that you're doing. Keep busy. Don't stop what you're doing. I have flowers from Middletown Dems for you, and also State Rep. Tina Davis. I have flowers here for you from her also. I wish you all the best, and know that we're all here for you. Thank you.
Most know, most know that we operate as a board of nine, and under our terms of operation, we really consider it a board of 10 when you count our superintendent. But if you know Neshamani history, you probably know that there's an 11th board member that never got any recognition, but has spent many years advocating for Neshamani students and the Neshamani community. So at this time, I'd like to ask our 11th board member to approach the podium, Mr. Steve Rotis.
Good evening, Dr. McGee, President Parentano, members of the school board. I do miss coming to meetings, subcommittee meetings, regular meetings, backyard meetings, everything. But up until two and a half years ago, I attended every school board meeting and subcommittee meeting during Irene's tenure on the board, which also included, I only can remember six different superintendents. But, you know, in retrospect, it seems like a heck of a lot of superintendents, just for, you know, for 14 or 16 years. And going to all these meetings, I had a pretty good idea of who knew what and who was clueless. I knew what Irene brought to the board and to the district was experience gained through her years as an administrator at Temple University. Coinciding with her time on the school board, the Neshamani School District started to reverse course, and it was kind of like moving an aircraft carrier by hand, because the courses don't, the entire district doesn't move that easily, particularly in regards to education and ranking within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Test scores started to rise, as did ranking. Until now, we are equal to and above our surrounding districts. Irene's voice, though not loud, was heard by various presidents and members of the school board in accomplishing, with the approval of the public, some of the following highlights: major upgrades and restoration of the Shaminie High School, closing outdated schools and those which have been allowed to fall into deep disrepair, construction of a new elementary school, and with continued board foresight and public approval, a new school at this location, and future buildings in areas of Levittown. During this time, we also settled a pretty long impasse with the teachers and the teachers' union. And my personal favorite, full-day kindergarten, was instituted in the district.[1144.15][1144.15](APPLAUSE). You should only know how many board meetings I went to with that as my sole agenda, each and every board meeting. Both income and especially expenses were more closely watched. All of this added to better functioning and more coherent operations by the district. Another important fact is the establishment of a three-minute time limit on audience comments per person without negative and personal attacks has proven to be a great change in civility as compared to other nearby districts. And one's pretty nearby, also adjacent, but can leave them nameless. In summary, Irene has been present throughout the rebirth of Neshamani, and in her quiet way, has contributed to this rebirth. So Irene, congratulations, good luck in retirement, and thanks to you and the board for your magnificent work over 16 years. Thanks a lot.
At this time, I would like to ask a former School Board Director, Anthony Spessato, to come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Fellow board members, I really appreciate everything you do. Believe me, I know how difficult this job is. Irene, God bless you, you're a saint. I can't imagine having been able to live through 16 years of what it was like to be a School Board Director. I truly admire you. I was very, very interested, Irene and I don't share a lot of political opinions. The interesting thing was that, on the school board, we really, really got together, and we pretty much agreed on everything, because we put all the politics aside from both sides and said what was good for the kids, and Irene was totally on board with that. We were worried about taxpayers, and we were worried about the children, and Irene, you were stalwart in that time. It was a very difficult time for everybody. There was a lot going on, and we were seeking to make a lot of changes. And God bless you, Irene. She's one of the Democrats I supported in my life, there were three Democrats I supported in my life, and I had no problem supporting Irene. Irene, you're an incredible person. Irene served in the military also, and I really appreciate that. There's just so much to be grateful to Irene for, all her hard work. I could echo what everybody else echoed, but it would just be crazy. Irene, I love you. You're probably the closest Democrat I've ever been to. But I totally respect you, and I would vote for you any day of the week. God bless you, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Spessato. At this time, I'd like to ask former School Board Director Sue Cummings to come to the podium.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Irene, I wanted to come here and see you on your last evening tonight, and so, and welcome, or good evening to everybody else, and thank you for all your service of what you do. So, can I take this off? Sorry, Irene, thank you for serving the Neshamani Board of School Directors for the last 16 years. Sorry, I have a cold, not COVID, though. For the last 16 years, which takes a lot of time and commitment, people who share of their time and expertise to this extent deserve a special thank you, and that acknowledges your contributions to the Neshamani School District. You have led the Education Development Committee, the Policy Committee, which I had the pleasure to serve with you. You were a voice at the Bucks County IU for many years, an liaison to the district. Over the last 16 years, you have helped shape Neshamani for what it is today, for the refurbishing of the new high school, through many contract negotiations, upgrading our district schools, saving our pools, redistricting to the grade schools and building Tuwanka, and the decisions that you've made during the pandemic. Again, a big thank you for your selfless years as a member of the Neshamani School Board Directors. It was a pleasure working with you for the 12 years that I was on.
Thank you, Sue. At this time, we have former School Board Director and former President Scott Condon. Would you please come to the podium?
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, board. Irene, you know, this is a nonpartisan job. I never realized you were a Democrat. I found that out. You learn something new every day. But all kidding aside, 16 years, I couldn't imagine it. I know what this board has been through over the last 16 years, and to stick with it with professionalism, integrity, unlike no other. You know, you've been there, and you've been there for me quite a few times when I first dove into the experience of being a board director. I watched, I learned a lot from you. I followed your lead in a lot of different areas. We didn't agree on all aspects and decisions that made, and there was quite a few times I got the Irene finger, "You don't understand," but I always listened, respected and honored your opinion, and I learned a lot from it. There was four years that I spent on this board with you sitting next to me, and I got a couple kicks in the shin, and got a lot of good leadership that people didn't realize was taking place. You know, 16 years, like, once again, I mean, how many trips back and forth from Maple Point? You know, committee meetings that weren't just here at Maple Point, you know, assigning committees to people. Irene was always there to help out and take those committee positions that everybody either could not do because of jobs, you know, their professions, or they just didn't want to do it. And Irene was always that person that would step up and fill the holes that no one wanted to fill. I respected that. I learned a lot from you. And I just want to thank you from everyone, the board, students, taxpayers, employees of the district. Your experience will be greatly missed on this board, and believe me, four years, you get to hit the, you know, get to feel like you know what you're doing, you know, and you're a big contributor to this board, but 16 years, you know, I don't think you could pay someone enough to do that, and here you did it as a volunteer. But once again, I just wanted to let you know how much I did learn and understand where you were coming from, even though, like I said, on some of our decisions, we disagreed. But we've always been respectful of each other, and I want to thank you for the help that you did provide while I did sit on this board. And once again, thank you for the 16 years.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, another one of your dear friends are here that was an employee of the district, our former HR Director, Mrs. Teresa Hindenburg is in the back, who usually will not ever say anything at the podium, but I will insist that she comes up and say a few words.
I don't even know how to use this any...
Just speak. Turn it off.
Irene, and basically, everything that everyone said, working with you was always such a pleasure, and I thank you for your friendship, your mentorship, your, you know, calming presence sometimes when things would be getting rough, and everything that you've offered over the years, and just thank you, and look forward to working with you on the other side. So, thanks.
Thank you, Terry. We also happen to have another great friend of yours and a friend of all of us, our former CNI Director and former interim Superintendent, Dr. Gloria Hancock's in attendance, and even though I'm sure she does not have prepared comments, we would like her to come up and say a few words.
It's only on TV, right. Good evening. Irene, what can I say? I am just in awe of you, first of all. You're a woman of integrity, a woman with a great level of professionalism and respect. You're very welcoming, and I treasure that when I first came to the district, you were right there. You were by far the easiest chairperson that I got to work with, not because you were easygoing all the time, but because you were always well-prepared. So it made my job a lot easier. There was never a time that I couldn't call on you and say, "What would you like to have on the agenda?" You're always very clear, and I appreciate that. It's been a long time coming. It's hard to be a public servant, I know. I've served as a public servant for 41 years. I started when I was two. But, again, you've never lost that focus about children and about the teachers and the hard work that everyone does, and you've done it with such grace and with such pleasure. So enjoy the time and do other fun things in life that's in store for you. Thank you so much, Irene.
(APPLAUSE). Thank you, Dr. Hancock. Have I missed anyone? I think I got everybody that came out. At this time, Irene, if you could join us and over here at the podium. Dr. McGee is going to join us in a second. We're gathering all your presentation gifts here. Yes? And Mr. Stanley? Rob, why don't you come stand on the side here? Irene, why don't you stand in the center here?
On behalf of the district, we have the ceremonial plaque that we want you to hang proudly in your home and display to your friends. But in addition, we have received a plaque for you from the entire school board, states Irene Boyle, with deep appreciation for your dedication and 16 years of service to the entire Nishamity community, school board director from 2005 to 2021. Never underestimate the difference you have made. I gotta put my glasses on, I'm sorry. Never underestimate the difference you have made and the lives you have touched.
Let's go to the center, get some flowers and get some pictures.
And last, we have a honorable certificate from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association to appreciate your 16 years of service, not only to Nishamity, but as a Pennsylvania elected school board director.
We will need volunteers to help with the haul that Irene was giving this evening to get it to the car, so nobody leave all at once at the end of the meeting. And the members, of course, will wait until board comment where they'll show their appreciation to the Nishamity community. As we move on now, before we move into the first period of public comment, at this particular time, I would like to offer my resignation as board president. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan. At this time, due to the new rules that are, we have to...
Temporary resignation.
Excuse me?
Temporary resignation.
Temporary resignation. Yeah, new rules that apply. That apply. We have to ask if there's anybody that wants to make public comment on my resignation. Seeing none, at this time, are there any board members? Hearing none, this can be a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Motion passes nine to zero. Eight to zero, I'm sorry, we're missing someone this evening. She would have voted yes if she was here. She's at the Powderpuff Football Game for her daughter this evening. At this time, I would like to nominate Ms. Irene Boyle to serve as Nishamity School District Board President. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. At this time, again, does the public want to make any comments on the nomination of Irene Boyle? Hearing none. Does the board have any comments on the nomination? Hearing none. This needs to be a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle? Mrs. Hollenbach?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentana?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Congratulations, Mrs. Boyle. Please take the president's chair. We conclude a public comment. We are at routine matters. Oh, I'm sorry.
1.07, we're talking about public comment. Anyone would like to? Joshua Anderson?
Okay, there we go. Good evening. My name is Josh Anderson. My daughter's a freshman at Nishamity High School. First, say thank you to all my former Nishamity teachers, us and Oliver Heckman and Nishamity Middle School grad, back when those schools were around. So I'm here tonight to just ask really a question of the board and address some issues that transpired during the week of October 25th at Nishamity High School, particularly students walked out en masse in protest during the day and during class time. And my question to the board is whether or not protests are sanctioned or if there's a process for protests during class time and if so, what that procedure is. Apparently, multiple students left the classroom setting, classroom environment, the learning environment during the day. According to the response from the principal that was made, a public letter, I actually had inquired to the board, to each of you, I sent a communication as well as to Dr. McGee and the principal that I did not get a response back, that's why I'm here this evening. I'm just trying to inquire whether or not protests are sanctioned during the learning day and if so, what that procedure is if other students wish to do that.
We can't answer right now. We'll answer for comment later.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Randy Miles?
My name is Randy Miles. I'm a resident of Langhorne and a parent of three Nishamity students. I spoke previously with you about the need to teach our kids to think critically and to distinguish between truth and fiction. And to do that, we need to employ a rigorous example ourselves and we need to take the time and make the effort to investigate and find truth, not just rely on the arguments of others. So my message this evening is just to make that effort and to put in the time to dig into data and find truth. If we don't, then we react out of weakness and fear. We don't want to respond out of fear, but we want to respond out of courageous, out of courage and stand for truth. One case that I was thinking of, and I spoke in August about the mask mandate, I sent you guys a summary of 50 scholarly articles that showed that masks are effective to 15 to 20 minutes. And after that, they do not help, but in fact, they're detrimental to the health of, health and education of kids. If you show me data that counters that truth, then I would like to see it. And I don't mean that rhetorically, I mean that literally. I believe that the continued implementation of the mask mandate is not based on data. However, I don't want to look backward so much as I want to talk, I want to look forward and comment on the comprehensive plan that you guys are going to vote on tonight. One of the things that I appreciate about it is that you include in there a meaningful and a program for assessment and data and specifically you mentioned add qualitative data systems and invest in data systems infrastructure. So I am encouraged and pleased with that. It's critical to honestly employ quality data in decision-making. So thank you for that, for including that and prioritizing it. In addition, I want to point out another statement, the plan states student social and emotional success is a function of the same. A 21st century education goes well beyond reading, writing and arithmetic. This is commendable, but I want just want to caution you to be careful because it could be unintentionally abused. Consider that in the 40s and 50s, Leo Kiner first thought autism was innate and then taught that it was a direct result of cold parenting and blamed mothers for causing the condition. Then later in the 90s, this was transformed into the belief that the only thing that really mattered in autism was biochemistry. So doctors made diagnoses and gave treatment based on blood tests alone, not bothering to look patients in the eye. I think we can all be thankful that we've moved far beyond that point. But my point, my point is that we need to be cautious in adopting current trends in psychology or embracing the latest cultural agenda. Don't rush into something that we all might regret years down the road or be ashamed of. It takes humility to admit when we don't know the answer, but we need to be courageous enough to oppose the pressure to just do something or to do something to appease a vocal few. So put the effort in, dig for the truth and be bold enough to stand up for the truth.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. A public comment right now. Okay, we're going to make a master motion. 2.01 through 2.06, right? Okay, 2.01 is the minutes. 2.02 is the treasurer's report. 2.03 is the check, register and procurement card purchases. 2.04 is the budget transfers. 2.05 is investments and 2.06 is exoneration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against or...
Opposed.
Or opposed?
Or abstentions? No? Okay, motion passes eight.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero.
Move on to Personnel Administration.
Okay. Personnel Administrative. 3.01 is appointments. Mr. Puretime?
Thank you, President Boyle. 3.01 appointments resolve that the Nishamity Board of School Directors hereby approves the reappointment of Kelly Kozic as Director of Human Resources effective January 1, 2022 pursuant to the terms and conditions of the modification and extension, the employment agreement attached to the agenda as reviewed and approved by the district solicitor and superintendent and approves and authorizes the execution of the agreement by the board secretary and the board president pursuant to 24PS, Section 4-428 of the school code.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. And all in favor?
Comments, questions and concerns?
Comments, questions and concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions?
Motion passes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Moving on to Personnel, certificated, Mr. Sullivan?
We'll do a master motion. Yes, okay. I'd like to make a master motion to approve item 4.01, retirements, resignations, end of assignments, appointments. 4.03, tenure awards. 4.04, leaves of absence. 4.05, changes to leaves. 4.06, revised leaves of absence. 4.07, co-curricular appointments.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Comments, questions?
Comments, questions or concerns?
I'd just like to take this moment to state that in our 4.01, Mary McGinley has served Nishamity for 23 years and Glenn McKee has served Nishamity for 20 years. We wish them well in their retirement and thank you for your many years of service to the Nishamity community.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against or abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero.
This is hard on a good day.
Yes. Personnel, support, Mrs. Hollenbach.
I'd like to make a master motion for 5.01, retirements, resignations, end of assignments. 5.02, appointments. 5.03, ancillary. 5.04, leaves of absence. 5.05, revised returns from leave.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. And so, any comments, questions or concerns?
Yes, Madam President, I would just like to make note that in 5.01, Ronald Radcliffe, bus driver, has spent 26.3 years here at Nishamity. Again, we appreciate your many years of dedication service to the Nishamity community. Wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Against or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes, eight to zero. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbach.
Six point zero one, Sunday facility usage. Whereas according to Board Policy eight hundred, facilities slash fields may not be scheduled on Sundays without school board approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves Sunday usage for. The Nishamani Valley Music Theater, Inc. has requested Sunday usage for Nishamani High School Black Box Theater on Sunday, April third, 2022, and April tenth, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Kovitz. And so any comments, questions, or concerns? And hearing none, motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstentions? Okay. Now, motion passes, eight to zero. Okay, all right. Educational development, Mrs. Hollenbach.
I'm taking Mrs. Bowman's place since she is not in attendance. Do you want me to do these separate? Do you want me?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven point zero one, District Comprehensive Plan, 2021 through 2024. Whereas the Nishamani School District Comprehensive Plan, formerly known as the Strategic Plan, is a requirement of the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And whereas the Comprehensive Plan was developed collaboratively over six-month period, and whereas the Comprehensive Plan has been shared with parents and staff and made available for public review for twenty-eight days prior to the board meeting in accordance with PDE guidelines. And whereas the Comprehensive Plan has been recommended by the Nishamani School Board's Educational Development Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby adopts the attached Comprehensive Plan for July first, 2021, through June thirtieth, 2024, and authorize the superintendent to make the necessary submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
May I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Sorillo. And any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes, eight to zero.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh. The next two, Mr. Mar- okay.
It's okay.
Seven point zero two, let's.
Okay.
That brings us to seven point zero two.
Seven zero, zero two, student settlement agreement. Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, yeah, seven point zero two. The Nishamani School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the family of student number seven X X X. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves providing for the educational programming as specified in set agreement. Want me to do seven oh three right now, too, or?
No, no.
We have to do it. Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Comments, questions, or concerns? So hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against or abstentions? None, motion passes, eight to zero. No, he has to do the next one.
Yes.
Seven point oh three, out of district placements, Mr. Marington.
Okay, yep, seven point oh three, out of district placements. Whereas in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous to utilize the services of out-of-district providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below.
May I have a?
There are four, there are four different students listed by ID number.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
And any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against or abstentions? No, hearing none, motion passes, eight to zero. So policy, Mr. Peritano.
Thank you, Madam President. Eight point zero one, second reading of policy. Whereas the first reading of policy, zero zero six, zero one four, nine zero three, and series two hundred pupils was completed at the public work session on November ninth, 2021. And whereas, the following policies are being recommended by the Policy Committee for board adoption into the Nishamani School District Policy Manual. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the policies listed above for the adoption in the Nishamani School District Policy Model, Manual, number zero zero six, number zero one four, number nine oh three, number two oh one, number two oh two, number two oh eight, number two ten, number two eighteen, number two thirty-three, and number two forty-nine.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Is there any? Mr. Sorillo. May I have any, any comments, questions, or concerns? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against or abstentions? Motion passes, eight zero. Okay, we got. Eight point oh two is PSBA participation agreement. Mr. Peritano.
Thank you, Madam President. Eight point zero two, PSBA participation agreement. Resolve that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached participation agreement with the PSBA for the 2021, 2022 school year.
May I have a second? By Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against or abstentions? None, motion passes, eight to zero.
Well, it was, it was an honor to be board president for a day. But at this, at this point, I am, I'm going to resign, okay?
Officially will second. At this time, since our board president's seat is vacant, I'd like to nominate, who wants it? I'd like to nominate Mr. Peritano. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. Any comments? Questions or concerns? Yeah, come to think of it, come to think of it. All right, so I believe that brings us to a roll call vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Miss Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Peritano?
Yes.
Mr. Sorillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion passes?
Passes, eight to zero.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle, for your, for your service this evening. And now you have, now, we're not going to change seats, we're going to stay where we're at. And this, this completes not only approaching your end of sixteen years of service on this board, which you still have actually one other duty left, but you have now held every possible position that any board member could hold as a member of the Nishamani School Board. So that's a, that's a record. Not only will your sixteen years never be met, but holding every possible position on every committee and every executive level will never be matched by your service, and we thank you once again. This will bring us to our second public comment period. If there's anyone in the audience wishes to make public comment, please approach the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name, the area in which you reside, your occupation.
Hi, good evening, Deborah Harker, Middletown Township. I'm a banker. I'm disappointed that there wasn't a plot twist with Steve not being reelected, but. I wanted to continue the appreciation train for Irene. I once said that each child only gets twelve years in this school district, and I'm honored that my son was a child in this school district from the time that he was in kindergarten through graduation during your tenure of the school board. And I was very, very happy to have you at his graduation last year, so thank you for being there. Being a school board is a thankless job. You guys have all sat through many meetings where people have yelled, cursed. It's been unbelievable, I've kind of stayed away from it for a while because of that. But all of these people that are sitting here are, it's not really a political position. They all come here, it's not paid, they're members of your community. I didn't know a single person when I came to the first school board meeting that I ever attended. And over the years, many of you have become my friends, and it's because I took the time to get to know you, and you all took the time to get to know me and seek me out from coming to meeting after meeting to find out a little bit about me and vice versa. So to anybody who comes to these meetings and feels like the people that are sitting at this table are adversaries and people to be yelled at and people that you need to scream at or point fingers at in order to get your way, maybe try getting to know them a little bit. And you'll find out that they're actually your friends, neighbors, community members, and people that you can actually respect and honor for the service and volunteerism that they put into the positions that they do here, week after week after week. I tried at one point, Irene, to count up the number of hours that you have sat at these tables, and they're uncountable. Maybe Doc could, but they are absolutely uncountable, the number of hours that you have put into this position, and we all thank you. And I respect the decisions that you have made. I haven't always agreed with you, but I have watched and saw you make decisions where you have dug in where you felt like you really needed to. And I've also seen you make decisions that may not be what you personally wanted, but it's what you felt like you had to make the decision in order to propel the district forward and what was in the best interest of the children. And if any of you are sitting in this table, that's what it's really about. It's not about what you personally want. Sometimes you have to go along with what's best for the district on the whole. You once told me that, I was like, how can you? Weeks before, at the political polls, people were yelling and screaming at each other, trying to jostle for positions on this board. And then they come to this meeting, the last one in November, and everybody's nice, nice. And you're like, those are the people that were just kind of not so nice weeks before. And you told me, this is the kumbaya meeting. This is the meeting where everybody makes nice and says great things. But everybody here said it with heart and honor and respect. So thank you for your service and kumbaya.
Does anyone else wish to make public comment and approach the podium? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move forward then. This will bring us to the board comment period. I would ask that both Dave and Irene be last to speak at this evening's meeting. So is there any board member? I'm sorry, again, and I wrote it right here, right there I wrote it. Dr. McGee, would you wish to make any commentary this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Peritano. I apologize, all I got is your first name, sir, Josh. And I apologize for not responding to the email. Nishamani High School is a big, busy place, three thousand students, probably one of the top twenty, if not the top fifteen, size high schools in the area. And the two days you refer to, on the first day, approximately, and this from memory, thirty to forty kids walked out. We had a general idea that might happen. And then the following day, a little bit more, maybe forty to fifty kids walked out. That was a bit of a surprise to the high school administration. Having sat in that seat for a decade, there's a fine line between being able to stop something, working with kids, and then making sure whatever happens, happens in a well-organized, safe way so everyone returns from it. So not being in that situation when this happened, I'd say whatever Mr. Staub did worked well because we got all the kids back within a reasonable period of time, and they were safe. So again, having done that myself, it's, it's a, it's a fine line. So there is no practice or procedure to it. The idea is to deal with student concerns as much as you can. When you can't stop something that's going to happen, whether it be a prank or something, you do your best to make sure the events are safe and everyone comes back from them. So that being said, I'll be glad to talk to you afterwards and explain the actual deep, deep details of it. So that's, that's, that's how you handle it. Sometimes you can't stop what you can't stop, so you make sure what's going to happen happens in a way that we can live with and, and, and everyone can be safe and come back in and argue later. All right. Thank you, Mr. Peritano.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any comment from any board members? Mr. Kovitz, please?
Sure. So I know we've had, to address the gentleman came out and talking about data and stuff. Thank you for the comment. I, I've, I've said it before, and most everybody knows. I've been trained as an engineer, my degree's in engineering, and so I'm all about data. I teach engineering to, to high school students. And, you know, I'm in agreement, we should always dig, dig for the truth. And I, I teach my students not only problem solving, but critical thinking. That's just part of the engineering process. And so, you know, one of the things I do, I talk to my students about, though, is that there's a difference between data and information. Data is raw, it's what, what you see is what you get after using instrumentation to give you information on various variables and things. But it's information that we glean from it. And information can be skewed in a lot of different ways. And there are lots of opposing agendas at the moment. And as a board, we just do our best to, we have an agenda too. And that is to do what's best for the students and for the taxpayers to the best of our ability. And, and we have to follow the rules, too. So there are certain prevailing laws that we must abide by. And given that, it's why we.
Dave, as Adam and Paul just said, it has been a pleasure working with you for the last four years. We've had some good discussions along the way, and I always thought you were probably one of the more rational people on the board and thought things, you know, thought things out. And I'm not sure if that's, well, case in point. And, you know, you went through, yeah, I think it probably took you two years or so to realize about the Steve calls, but, you know, we all go through that. But it has been a pleasure, and you will be missed. You definitely will be missed on this board, by me, by me, and I'm sure by many others. Irene, we spoke earlier today. I learned a lot from you, I really did. And I remember one of the first votes I had, we talked about a lot. It was a tough vote. And you gave me some good guidance. And I guess one thing I learned from you is, when you walk across that imaginary line, it's not about what party or any stuff like that, it's about what can we do for the kids and what can we do for the taxpayers of this district. And that's, if anything, that's one thing I definitely, definitely learned from you. And like Scott said about the finger, I've seen the finger a couple times in meetings and all that, but sometimes I like to just provoke the finger because it was fun to just get the finger pointed at me too. But, you know, you will definitely, definitely be missed. I mean, 16 years, God bless you. But you know what? You showed up, you suited up, showed up, and that's what you did. And you were steady. For the six years I've been on the board with you, you've always been a very, very steady board member, and you definitely will be missed. So thank you.
Ms. Hollenbach?
Good evening. First and foremost, I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you get to spend the time with your friends and family and shopping, if that's what you so choose to do. I've been on the board six years. I started with Marty. And yes, I can say that we've both learned a lot from you, Irene. It is truly been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. Dave, you as well, as Marty said, you are a true gentleman and have always been rational with everything and with what you thought you were doing, what was best for the kids. We would not be where we were today at Nishamani without you two outstanding board members, and you will surely be missed. Not to say we're not going to welcome the new members that start in two weeks, but right now, as Deb said, it's all kumbaya. So God bless, good luck with everything you guys do in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Perattano. I would also like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We made it to November, we're getting into our holidays. School started in September. It didn't start the way we all hoped it would, but we are moving along and working along with it. And as I've said many a time, we appreciate your patience. That said, moving on to Mr. Marington. Can I say, you are undoubtedly a man of few words, but I have to say, they are poignant words, and they always seem to come at the right time when we are in the middle of discussion. I've been on a number of different configuration of boards. They all have personality, and they all have a quirk to them. Arguments do spring up. This has been one of the most genial boards we've been on, and I believe you are a big part of that. Because you always, well, this said this, this is said, and Dave kind of sits back and, well, here's what I'm thinking. And rarely does anybody disagree. I will truly miss that. You are a gentleman, and I have been honored to serve with you. Thank you for your service to the district and your family to the district. And Ms. Boyle. When I first got on the board, I, Ms. Boyle, did not vote for me. I was picked to fill a position, and I never forgot that or forgave you. But she has been invaluable. Your wisdom that goes back from your beginning on the board and during conversations that we would have at board comment, you could always like, look, catch Irene's eye, and you could tell whether you were going to catch it after the meeting or not. And I just knew it. You would sit and wait, and she would make her way around, and, you know, it was always, you know, here's where you went wrong, here's what I believe. But it's been, it's been a pleasure. And I can't imagine moving forward, I can't, without those conversations after the meeting or discussions when we meet an executive. You are, you know, we do not always see eye to eye, but I always respect your opinion, and I am going to miss you dearly. And thank you for your service to the district, thank you for the service to this board. And I will conclude with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. David, I can't really say more than what everyone else has said. There probably aren't, well, next to Irene, maybe too, but there's probably not more, two more opposing minds than yours and mine, where we, how we approach things. But as everybody has spoken, as you get to work with people and you spend time together, you start realizing that everybody has something of value to offer. And Dave's offerings have been most valuable, this district, during your tenure here, even though it was short. As you know, I pleaded with you not to leave. You decided to choose the 4 o'clock buffet at the Golden Corral instead of the board. That's a running joke between me and Dave, so I can't tell you how much I've appreciated over the years of working with you and discussing the issues and you taking my point of view, me taking your point of view, and somehow, in the end, we both end up at the same place. So that's a testament to your character as a person. It's a testament to your family's service in this community, and I wish you nothing but the best. And it's a sad goodbye from me to you. So good luck, my friend. To my Ms. Irene, I prepared remarks because I don't know if I'd be able to get through them if I could, but I'm going to try to anyway. I first met Irene on the other side of the podium, when we used to come to meetings. And I would come to the policy meeting because Irene was chair of the policy committee. And Irene used to say to me, she'd say, "Steve, I love you to death, but I'm going to kill you." We would have some battles over different ways that policy should be enacted. And once then, I became a board member. Irene really became a mentor to me. I could always look to her, again, as someone else coming from a different point of view, that somehow always would have a way to maybe pull me one way or the other. But Irene truly, and all you members too, never took our disagreements personally. We come from different points of view. Irene has, you know, a very, very different aspect than I have or anybody else may have. And we would have some knock-down, drag-out discussions. And you never, ever, ever, ever took it personal. You just expressed the point of view and how we need to do the right thing. And you never, ever, in the nine years that I've served with you, have ever seen you take a vote based on what the politically correct thing was to do. You always, always analyzed two things first, what is best for kids, what's best for taxpayers. And that's how you voted. And I know over time that you've taken a lot of backlash for being nonpartisan in how you approached this district. You have made me a better person, you've made me a better board member. You are truly a friend, and to me, my family, your family. When there was times when I needed somebody the most, Irene was always there, and that's something I'll never forget. I will miss you. I know you'll still be around, but it will make me sorrow not to see you every second Tuesday or a board meeting. So I wish you well in your endeavor. At this time, I would ask if Mr. Marington has any closing comments?
Yeah, I first would just like to thank everybody for the kind words, you know, board members and, you know, Dr. McGee and everything. I would be remiss, however, Dr. McGee left off one of my family members. My daughter also graduated from the Shamy, and I have to mention that, that, yeah, we, there have been Maritons here since the creation, and I'm leaving with, you know, some mixed feelings. I would like to take some time here to encourage other educators, particularly teachers, retired or otherwise, you know, to step up and get involved in the school board. I, you know, I think there's a, as a longtime teacher myself, stepping onto, you know, as teachers call the dark side, over here on this side of the table, for me, it was a great learning experience. And I think every teacher would benefit from spending time in a situation, either on a school board or coming to committee meetings. Because, you know, as a teacher, we tend to get locked into our classroom. And seeing how the entire district works from a financial standpoint, from a, you know, from a policy standpoint, is an important lesson, I think, for teachers. I also think teachers have a lot to offer the board, you know, that perspective from the classroom, which is also, I think, an important one. So I keep talking to all my teacher friends to try to get, you know, to get them to come out here and get involved with either the board or other aspects of the school district. So if you know anybody out there who might step up, that would be great. But, you know, I used to have a sign, a handmade sign in my room when I was teaching that said that everyone is my teacher, because I can learn from all. And I take that to heart, and I look around this room and, you know, I still feel that way. We can learn from everybody, you know, if we just take the time to listen and be respectful. And, you know, Irene, I, you know, I was here for four years and I'm bailing. 16 years is just, you know, I congratulate you, and to me, it's kind of beyond, beyond the pale. But congratulations, and I know we'll see you around and you'll do well, and good luck. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. Ms. Irene?
Well, I certainly want to thank every, all the kind words that everyone has expressed. It has been, it has been my honor to have served in the Shamy community for the past 16 years. My sadness in leaving the board at this time is mitigated by the fact that I leave you in good hands. The Shamy is exceedingly fortunate in this difficult time that we have a dedicated and ethical superintendent, Dr. McGee, who is complimented by a loyal and hard-working staff. My gratitude to Paul and Michelle, Jason, Don, Anthony, and Kelly. Thanks especially to our teachers and, of course, to our support staff. And a special note of thanks to board president Steve and vice president John, who have led us through a difficult period. Aided, of course, by the rest of the board, Tina, Cindy, Marty, Dave, Adam, and Paul. My hope is that the school district is better from my having been here. But I'd like to say that there are many types of board members. Those who like to talk and those who prefer to listen. And in this extroverted world, people who prefer to reflect rather than verbalize are not always understood. But to the community, I say, be kind to your school board, who are only here to serve and ask nothing in return. And to my fellow board members, be considerate to each other, because in spite of our differences, we are here for the same reason, for the welfare and education of our children. And now, it is time to say goodbye. Until we meet again.
I just want to remind the public that on 11:30, 6:30 in this boardroom will be an educational development meeting. And then on December 2nd, in the Maple Point Auditorium, will be the Act 34 hearing for the new elementary school here at the Maple Point Middle School campus. And we will conclude this year with, on December 6th, with our board reorganization meeting. And on December 15th, we will have a facilities and planning committee meeting at 6:30 in the district, this district board meeting room. I want to thank all of you that come out this evening. And with that, I'll have a motion to adjourn. Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Have a happy Thanksgiving.